Your county council has been in executive session since four P M this afternoon. In the sake of public transparency, I'll ask that our county manager state for you the reasons we had a need to be in executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of county council. We entered into executive session with the following seven matters. Three economic development matters currently known as projects Black Sable, Star, and Paper Trail. Four legal matters pertaining to Greenwood County Policy five point one. An issue at the Gateway Landing Boat Ramp. A decision by the Board of Assessment and Appeals. And an issue in the nineteen hundred block of Nation Road.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Having heard those reasons, I'll ask for a motion that we exit executive session. So moved. Motion by Mr. Templeton, second by Ms. Griffin, all in favor. And we have now exited executive session. Thank you. We'll open our regular meeting now. We will begin with invocation and our pledge of allegiance to our flag as always. Council District One Councilwoman Teresa Griffin will please pray for us. Thank you. Stand if you can.
Lord say good evening to each and every one of you all. Let us go in prayer. Gracious Father, we come saying thank you. Thank you, Lord, for life, health, and strength. We thank you for our line down last night and our uprising this morning. Lord, we come here today to do the business of Greenwood County. We ask, Lord, that we will all be on one accord and make those decisions that would definitely affect Greenwood and the surrounding areas. Praying, Lord, that we just continue to love one another, give each other what the Lord has asked of us to give, to love our neighbor as ourselves. Lord, once we do that, then we're able to make those decisions that will be best for Greenwood County. Now blessed the sick, the fleet, the careless, and all the concerned. Bless those that are here today. In these and all of the blessings, we do ask in our son Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Councilwoman Griffin. Join us in the pledge if you will, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Counsel, I trust that you've had an opportunity to review the minutes from our past meeting, and if so, I'll entertain a motion that those minutes be accepted.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion from Ms. Miller, second from Vice Chairman, all in favor, and that is so ordered. Thank you. Tonight, we do have one presentation to make. I have a proclamation that we will enter into the record, a presentation for National Preparedness Month. So I'm going to, the proclamation was rather lengthy. I'm gonna abbreviate it somewhat, no disrespect to those being recognized. Whereas September is observed as National Preparedness Month to raise awareness about the importance of preparing for emergencies and to build resilience before disaster strike. And whereas counties and municipalities throughout South Carolina have been affected by a variety of disasters and emergencies, including ice storms, flooding, earthquakes, hurricanes, and the COVID nineteen pandemic. And whereas the residents of Greenwood County deeply appreciate the protection that the South Carolina State Guard has provided to all citizens of this great state for more than three hundred and fifty years, whereas authorized with the South Carolina Code of Laws, the State Guard is a professional military organization and component of the South Carolina Military Department, which supports a variety of critical functions of the state, county, and municipal governments, such as providing disaster relief assistance to communities and local first responder organizations. Whereas when serious natural or man-made disaster strike in South Carolina, the State Guard provides boots on the ground with the mission to swiftly respond, safeguarding people and property, and to aid community recovery in coordination with the National Guard, law enforcement, other state, county, and municipal agencies. Whereas the Guard is a part of the South Carolina Military Department and directed by the Adjutant General and its Commander in Chief is the Governor of the State of South Carolina. Now therefore, Greenwood County Council does hereby proclaim September twenty-five as National Preparedness Month in Greenwood County. Greenwood County Council recognizes and honors the members of the South Carolina State Guard and commends their all volunteer force, who nobly provides aid during times of disaster, who shares a passion and strong commitment to their fellow South Carolinians, and who embody the spirit of National Preparedness Month. Presented on the sixteen day of September, Greenwood County Council. Glad to have you all with us here today. We'll make a presentation there. Counsel, would you like to join me?
Mr. Hollins, sir, thank you for being here with us tonight.
Glad to be here.
And thank you for your service, certainly.
We don't have anybody here to take photo anymore? Huh? You want to take care of it? You understand? Whatever we want to do.
Do you want to take a picture?
I think her job's like, Mark.
He's giving you instructions.
And I have a presentation for you.
Thank you, sir.
For you all. Okay. So, on behalf of the South Carolina State Guard, which by way of explanation, the South Carolina State Guard is not the same thing as the South Carolina National Guard. When we talk about the Military Department, Military Department has the National Guard, there's also the State Guard. You'll notice that on my shoulder, the flag I wear is not the flag of the United States, it's the flag of South Carolina. That's because the State Guard is actually a state entity. Whereas military officers in the National Guard have a commission that's signed by the President of the United States. Our commissions, my commission in the State Guard is signed by the Governor of the State of South Carolina. So, we actually hearken back to the militia. So when you're in school and you're studying Thomas Sumter, Andrew Pickens, and the Swamp Fox, Francis Marion, nobody ever says, well, they were in the U.S. Army, because they weren't. They were militia leaders. So that's the lineage. Nowadays, they dress it up and they call it State Defense Force or State Guard, but we're the same thing as what used to be known as the militia. But, to make a long story short, I have here a certificate that is signed by the Commanding General of the South Carolina State Guard, Major General Leon Lott. Many of you may know that name anyway. He's the Risen County Sheriff, longtime friend. Yes, yes. And so we want to present this to all of you on behalf of the proclamation, and we appreciate it. You're welcome.
All right, hold up, let me get a photo.
Oh, oh.
I took a video, I didn't want to push you off, but I was also like, oh, I don't know. Uh, uh, you could this way. Yes. There you go. One, two, three.
Yes, sir. Ma'am?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good history lesson.
I got a little eight for your girl on my front page.
She's got this strong ass. You don't do it. She doesn't.
Thank you. Yes, sir, thank you.
I'll take one. I'll take a picture of hers. Thank you. Thank you again. The Guard certainly did well for Greenwood County, especially in aftermath of the lean. I told the county manager earlier that I think one of my first days on the chainsaw, there were some State Guard guys out there on chainsaws with us. Thank you so much. Yeah, we have chainsaw, we have more chainsaw teams than the State Guard does, so they probably were our thing. A lean, if you remember, was on Friday, the twenty-seventh September. Yep, sure. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move down to our segment of old business. Ordinance twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five twenty-two, to amend the Greenwood County zoning map as and if amended so that one parcel of land totaling approximately forty point six nine acres at four-ten Little Mountain Road, Greenwood County, changes from agricultural one to R-three single-family residential. Our county planning director, Ms. Carol Coleman, will tell us about this. This is third and final reading.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Stand back a little bit. This is the piece of property on Little Mountain Road. You can see down below is Main Street West or Highway thirty-four. It goes up and there's a bend in the road like a dog leg, so there are two points of connection with the Little Mountain Road. And we're gonna ask for, if it's approved, we would ask for accesses on both of those connections. So currently it's zoned A G one. A G one allows residential on lots as small as seventy-five hundred square feet if you have access to sewer. And the town of ninety-six is looking to provide sewer to this. You can see the town of ninety-six's map, zoning map, just inside there. They are actively in the process of looking to annex. So these are just points on Little Mountain Road that we just talked about, and looking towards two forty-six. So the current zoning is A G one, is a stated seventy-five hundred square foot lots. The setbacks are thirty-ten and forty, thirty on the front, ten on the sides, forty on the rear. The proposed lot size in R-three is the same, seventy-five hundred square feet, but it does reduce the lot width. This shows the available land. If you cluster the property, if you reduce the lot size by twenty-five percent, go down to six thousand square feet, you have to have so much land, ten acres, twelve acres, fourteen and a half acres. If you go up to thirty-five percent, that's to see if they can do this when they do a development plan fully. So the low-density residential is part of the long-range plan and the comprehensive plan for this area. Low-density is defined as no more than four units per acre or ten thousand eight hundred ninety square feet per lot. And this is one plan that they submitted with a hundred and eighteen lots on forty point six acres. It's two point eight four dwelling units per acre, which falls into low-density. The clustered, fully clustered plan shows a hundred and thirty-nine lots, which is three point three five dwelling units per acre. So both of these fall within our allowed limits under the long-range plan. If you have any specific questions, I'll be glad to address them. Again, I've spoken to the fire chief. We would look for two points of ingress and egress to make sure that there's safe access to get in and out, and make sure that they have the ability to get in if there's any problem.
So the second point, is it gonna be a road, or is it just gonna be public safety access?
No, I would ask for a full access.
Okay.
I think that the benefit of doing that is the access that you see on the right is the one that's closest to Highway thirty-four. That makes sense if you're going back towards Greenwood to go out that way. If you're going towards ninety-six, it would make sense to go out at the.
Yeah, I'm familiar with it, and that's, that was my concern. I mean, the developer at the zoning showed concern about that adding to the price of the dwellings when built, but, I mean, I think it's a safety thing.
Well, with the potential to do the clustering, I think they could probably make up for it. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to address them.
Carolyn, I believe I recall this comes with approval of the planning zoning, or recommended approval of the planning zoning board and recommendation of staff.
It does.
I'll offer your motion, Chairman. Second.
Have a motion, motion is to approve.
I second.
Have a second by Ms. Bishop, all in favor of approval. And that is unanimous and so ordered. Thank you. We'll now enter into our segment of new business. In the first two items of new business, council items A and B, we have determined in our earlier conversations that we need further conversation deliberation on this, so we will not be taking action on those tonight, and we will move to item C. Item C, new business is consideration of the approval of seven hundred and eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollar contract with C E Born and Company for the slate, for the slate roof replacement and building envelope restoration at the Art Center of Greenwood. Mr. Skinner, our CPST coordinator will give us details on that. Josh?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman and counsel. The item on the agenda today is the, I guess we can, approval of the roofing contract for the Art Center of Greenwood. This is project number twenty-three on the twenty-sixteen capital project sales tax. If you remember, we, back from back in June, the bids opened on May twenty-second, and C E Born was the lowest bid. We had eight alternates. We broke, we broke those down to seven alternates that are in the actual contract. Total, total bid from B E Born was one point one million, of course, we have six hundred and thirty thousand remaining in CPST funds for this project. The city and county and the building envelope specialists recommended set to the bid minus alternate two, which was the flat roof, for a total cost of seven hundred and eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-five. The additional funding needed would be split evenly between the city and the county, that's thirty-eight thousand nine forty-four between both of them. County council approved the selection of C E Born and that scope of work on June third, and then on June sixteenth, the city of Greenwood approved the thirty-eight thousand nine forty-four in H-tax funds. And of course, the extra thirty-eight thousand from the county was approved in the twenty-twenty-six budget. So Carson has reviewed the contract, and Allison looked at it today, found a couple small little details, but other than that, we're recommending approval with the contract as presented, the C E Born, with the designation and authorization of the manager and attorney to execute and deliver any relevant contract documents.
I'll offer your motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I second. I'm gonna take a pause here for a minute. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Templeton, second by Ms. Bishop. Are there any questions or conversation? If not, I'll ask, what is your pleasure? All in favor is presented? Thank you. Thank you, Josh.
Yeah, they have to start end of October.
Wait. It needs it.
Item D is a consideration of unbudgeted expense in the formal range to purchase radio equipment for the emergency operations center. Our emergency service director, Mr. Derek Oliver, Derek, tell us about this.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, so if you remember, a few months ago, I came and got approval to do some renovations over at the annex. The proposal came in a little over budget, so I had to do some subtracting. The original proposal that I wrote for the earmark funding did include the radios, but when I brought it to you, I didn't include the radios in it because we were well over budget. I have since cut some of those things that took us over budget, which brought us down to have enough money to purchase these radios throughout, through that same fund.
Right, Derek, thank you. That's good work. The county manager discussed that with me earlier. So, counsel, having, having heard what Derek has put before, sir, what is your pleasure?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. What's the cost of the radios?
Seventy-three thousand.
And to clarify, this is within the budget that was approved, it's just redirecting that money to another item.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
No additional expenses.
That's good work to get it there, Derek, thank you. So counsel, having heard that, what is your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second by Ms. Miller, second by Ms. Bishop. Go ahead. Any discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Templeton.
No, no, I was giving her the second. We were, we were, we were just pointing back and forth.
I beat him to the draw.
All in favor? That's unanimous and so ordered. Thank you, Derek. Item E, consideration of the appointments to the joint planning commission. Ms. Coleman, you have those for us, please.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. James Charles.
And of course, the extra 38,000 from the county was approved in the 2026 budget. So, Carson has reviewed the contract and Allison looked at it today, found a couple small little details. But, other than that, we're recommending approval with the contract as presented, with C.E. Born. With the designation and authorization of the manager and attorney to execute and deliver any relevant contract documents.
I'll offer your motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I second.
I'm gonna take a pause here for a minute. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Templeton, second by Ms. Bishop. Are there any questions or conversation? If not, I'll ask, what is your pleasure? All in favor is presented. Thank you. Thank you, Josh.
Yeah, they have to start end of October.
Wait. It needs it.
Item D is a consideration of unbudgeted expense in the formal range to purchase radio equipment for the emergency operations center. Our emergency service director, Mr. Derek Oliver, Derek, tell us about this.
Chairman, members of Council, so if you remember, a few months ago, I came and got approval to do some renovations over at the Annex. The proposal came in a little over budget, so I had to do some subtracting. The original proposal that I wrote for the earmark funding did include the radios. But, when I brought it to you, I didn't include the radios in it because we were well over budget. I have since cut some of those things that took us over budget, which brought us down to have enough money to purchase these radios throughout, through that same fund.
Right, Derek, thank you. That's good work. The county manager discussed that with me earlier. So, Council, having, having heard what Derek has put before, sir, what is your pleasure?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. What, what's the cost of the radios?
Uh, 73,000.
And to clarify, this is within the budget that was approved, it's just redirecting that money to another item.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
No additional expenses.
That was good work to get it there, Derek. Thank you. So, Council, having heard that, what is your pleasure?
Motion to approve. Our second.
By Ms. Miller, second by Ms. Bishop.
Go ahead.
Any discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Templeton.
No, no, I was giving her the second. We were, we were, we were on, we just pointed.
I beat him to the draw.
All in favor? That's unanimous and so ordered. Thank you, Derek. Item E, consideration of the appointments to the Joint Planning Commission. Ms. Coleman, you have those for us, please.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. James Charles, who was our Planning Commission Chairman, most recently had to step down for health reasons. And we requested of Councilwoman Miller to replace his appointment. And she came up with someone who is a professional and we think would add value to the Planning Commission in making decisions. So, we support this.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Miller, would you like to comment on your appointment?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. He's, lives in my district, certainly. He is in the marketing, sales department at Wesley Commons. So, certainly, he's worked in the real estate and industry for a long time. He's been, he was raised here in Greenwood. He's committed, he was very excited about contributing and being a part of this, this good group, actually. I think it adds a lot of value to it.
Thank you. You've heard Carol's recommendation and Ms. Miller's endorsement of her candidate. What is your pleasure?
Well, I'd like to make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Miller, second by Vice Chairman. All in favor of this appointment? And that's unanimous and so ordered. Thank you.
Quick question, sorry. Can you tell me where we are as far as appointments? Are we still down one and at?
We're down one.
At large?
Mm-hmm. Oh, no, it's actually, um, is it four? Oh, this was four, okay.
No, I'm four.
I thought, I thought.
It is three, it is three.
Especially.
It was.
Nobody told me. Oh, I sent you an email. No, I didn't see it.
Okay.
Well, I bet you'll find somebody.
I get all my appointments.
I'll follow up with you.
Yeah.
I bet you'll find somebody.
I'm gonna do my best.
She was, she was slated to roll off in, in November, but she had a knee injury.
Okay, I didn't know. Yeah, I'll work on it.
Got it, thank you.
It's fine.
And the good news is that we've made tremendous progress in, in filling these appointments that, that sometime in the past have been a bit problematic. Thank you, Carol. Okay, item F, monthly update from our county treasurer, Ms. Stephanie Dorn.
Good evening, Chairman and Council. I would just remind you that this is the last monthly update that I'll do. Next time you'll see me doing an update will be in December.
I do have one question about that. And when I, in my, I think that we need to keep the monthly updates, to be honest with you. And I know you do a lot, but, but you take care of a lot of money for the county. And that's very important. And so, hearing your report is, is, is important to me. And I, I think it's important to all of the county council members as well. So, I, I just, when that came up, that we were going to quarterly, I didn't feel like it was the appropriate time for me to say something. But, this is the appropriate time for me to say something about that. I think we need to stay monthly because we deal with, our budget is, is how much?
All of our funds are about 60 million.
That's, that's a lot of money. And, and I mean, you are the professional on that. And so, in my, I would, I would feel better if we did have, have it still monthly, to be honest. That's just my, that's just my opinion.
And Council, while we're in discussion, Ms. Bishop and I talked about this and I respect her opinion on this. But, let me provide just a bit of clarity. When Stephanie and I and the county manager had talked about this earlier, when we talked about going to a quarterly report, the consideration was that sometimes in 30 days, not much has changed. In 30 days. And, and, and what I said to Stephanie, and, and I would hope if you choose to support a quarterly report, that you could be comfortable with this, was that at any time that she feels there's a change or anything significant coming out of her office, that she would not have to come to me or even the county manager for permission. She would simply call Susan and say, put me on the agenda, I have something that Council has to hear. So, I don't, I don't disagree at all with Councilwoman Bishop that the work done is extremely important. But, I do have the confidence that Stephanie's exemplary performance always would give me confidence that she would tell us if there was something. And my, my personal conversation with our treasurer was just simply in consideration of time because of the massive amount of work that she does for us. So, but again, if Council, if Council as a whole has any opposition, Stephanie can come here every month if that's, if that's what she needs to do. Go ahead. Didn't mean to interrupt you.
Well, I, I think it's probably better if y'all come to a decision, so.
Mr. Chairman. Well, we're not gonna tell you to sit down and don't talk to us tonight.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I understand the protocol, the agenda, the items to be discussed at this meeting are to the discretion of the Chairman, that you, you make that decision. So, that really lies whatever you want to do. If I understand the proper protocol, it is your singular call to decide as to what we do there. And so, I yield to your authority, whatever your decision there is. So, uh, but I don't think it was put to a vote or, or it's supposed to be put to a vote.
No.
Ms. Bishop, and we all have a right to voice our different opinions of it, but the protocol is it's your decision.
Well, and again, I appreciate that, Mr. Allison. But, again, you know, I wanna make it clear to all of you, i- if, if, if the quarterly report doesn't give you significant heartburn, and if it does, I'm, I'm willing to adjust. But, um, but again, it was just simply out of consideration for Stephanie's workload. And I believe the fact that some, sometimes in a 30-day period, there's just not a lot of change to report. But, I felt like the safeguard, and Stephanie knows we had this conversation, the safeguard was that she doesn't have to ask any permission. All she has to do is tell Susan that she's going to be on the agenda and she will be on the agenda. So, but enough. Go ahead, Stephanie.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think you all know we're two months into our new fiscal year. As we expect, the general fund revenues are, are pretty low, only 3% of our budget. That is because our property tax bills have not gone out. And that is our significant, a significant portion of our revenue that will become, be coming in in December and January. Alternatively, our expenses are at about 18 and a half percent of the budget, which is a little bit more than you would expect into two months. However, we do have a lot of expenditures that are paid annually in advance, such as liability insurance and some service contracts. So, there's really no concerns, even though the numbers, when you look at the chart, look kind of out of balance for the moment. This is again, another reason why we maintain a strong fund balance to carry us through the, the time at the beginning of our fiscal year that's out, out of balance. We will have our auditors coming into the House at the end of September. Actually, see, that says the 23rd, but it's the 30th. Can't count my dates. We were excited again. This past week, we received an additional 30,000, 33,000 from FEMA for reimbursement for damage to roads. We have about 1.7 million dollars of projects that are in various stages of review. We actually spent, Louis and Rob spent a fair amount of time this afternoon with the FEMA representative. And, and they are very excited that he's coming back on Monday and they get to spend more time with him. But, they're working, FEMA's working really hard to get the, get them out of the, the manager stage and into what they, I think it's CRC review, which is kind of the last stage when our work is pretty much done. And so, they're really pushing hard to try and get that done and we're, we're all in favor of that. Just a reminder, the property tax sale will be held on October the 6th in the courthouse. This will be the, the first sale under tax collector Tanya Burton. If you recall, we had some changes, Karen retired, and we made those changes in that office. But, Tanya has been working awfully hard to make sure that she has not missed any deadlines or documentation or paperwork that's required to be done in that. Our hospitality tax collections rebounded this month and for the first two months were actually 10,500 dollars more than the first two months of the prior fiscal year. Our local accommodations tax collections, again, have settled back down from Helene. But, we are about 1,300 dollars ahead of the first two months. And again, hospitality and accommodations are always months behind. So, these represent June and July accommodations and sales. Our transportation program, as I previously reported, we did have reduced funding from DOT. And although they assured us that they would make it up, we don't have that in writing. And so, Matt did make changes to our services and we are seeing a decline in our trips. 1,692 this August compared to 2279 in August of last year. So, we are continuing to work with Matt and have a meeting this week with DOT to talk about where they are with their, their plans for future funding. New construction permits are about 85% residentially and 27% commercially. So, we have, we still have a significant amount of new construction going on. However, those are going down. They have declined for three months in a row, which is really to be expected because they've just been out of control, in a sense, for the, for the last two years, pretty much. So, at some point, you know, what goes up must come down. But, still no concerns from that area with those things. The last thing I wanna talk about is not actually in my written report. But, I can't tell you how happy I was last night when I went to my mailbox and I got this postcard that eventually everybody in Greenwood County will get. This is about our opioid coordinator and the work that she's doing. Now, I will tell you that my parents built the house that I'm in. And I know exactly who's lived in that house, but it was addressed to somebody I've never heard of before. And so, we are, we have found that what happened is CHC purchased a, a list of all residences. And apparently, there's some, some issues with the names being out of date or just wrong. So, we are, I coordinated with Abby Banks and then also she's coordinated with CHC. And we are posting on our social media just for people to understand exactly what it is that we're doing. We don't want anybody to think that they've received this because we think that they are suffering from addiction. We have sent this because we want to make sure that every household in Greenwood County is aware of the resources that are available to them. This is not just for people suffering with addiction. This is for the people who care about and love those people and want to help them, but don't know how to help them. This is a resource for them just as well as those in addiction. And so, this is the website, nextbeststeps.org. Also has Rebecca's phone number. But, for anyone who is offended by the mailing, we apologize for that. But, our goal is to break the stigma associated with addiction, to support the recovery for those and to support our community through these actions. So, if you, if you hear from anybody, because it does have the county seal on it because it was funded through our opioid funds, if you hear from anybody, just please make sure you can help them understand what, what it is that we're doing and why we have taken those steps. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Treasurer. That is very well stated. While, before we move on from this, Councilwoman Miller and I attended a meeting at Piedmont Tech in regard to resiliency, community resiliency recently. And transportation was one of the topics that was discussed. And I had suggested to Vision Greenwood, is, is leading that effort, that they might contact you to talk about your observations of the benefits of Matt Transit and any expansions, you know, potential expansions going forward. So, I hope that they will do that. Just wanted to mention that to you.
I would look forward to their communication.
Thank you, ma'am. And you're on tap for item G, Resolution 202524.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask one question?
Yes, ma'am, excuse me.
If, if I could, I, I found it very interesting and you, I'm sure you'll know the answer, on the A-tax? And when we're looking at August of this year compared to last year, woo, big increase. Any driver on that?
So, what happened is there was a late payment and, that didn't get paid in July, that got paid in August. And so, that's why you see the big difference.
Okay, so if you, July and August, both are kind of, July is lower than it should have been.
Correct.
I was hoping it was all that economic impact from.
I'm afraid not.
The Parks and Rec.
But, it's still to, to collectively, the two months together are 1,300 dollars more. But, as we, as we roll into seeing the impacts from and comparing years, you're gonna start hearing me talk about that Helene was making last year's numbers high. And so, this year, it's gonna look low, but that really doesn't mean anything. So, yeah, there's always some anomalies to make it interesting. Thank you.
Council, before I move on, any other questions of Ms. Dorn in regard to her report? So, hearing none. Item G, Resolution 202524, to consider the budget amendment for allocation from the general fund balance for the procurement of consulting services related to Project Black Sable. Stephanie?
You all, at your last meeting, approved for Mr. Bateman to proceed with this contract. And somehow, we failed to make sure you funded it. So, this is to fund that, those services in the amount of 88,500 dollars. And they will be paid out of the general fund fund balance.
Council, I think we have, we've had discussion on this. What's your pleasure?
I make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
A motion by Ms. Bishop, second by Mr. Templeton. Before we vote any further discussion, Mr. Pruitt.
It's all good.
Before we have a vote, any further discussion needed? Hearing none. All in favor? That's unanimous and so ordered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item H, Resolution 202525, to consider the allocation of funds for accommodations, tax applications. And I think Louis is gonna give that presentation to us.
He is, and as he comes up, I just wanna ask that you all be grace, have some grace with him. Bless his heart. He's gonna be embarrassed when I say this, but he just came back from his honeymoon. He got home at 2 o'clock in the morning due to a medical emergency on the plane, which his wife, as a nurse, assisted with. So, that tells you the kind of person that he is and who he married. But, he's a little low on sleep, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna stand by to support him if necessary, but I think he's gonna do just fine.
I'm thinking that the person that should have given some grace might have been the treasurer and let him stay home this evening.
But, Louis, congratulations.
Congratulations and good job.
See you.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I'm happy to be, happy to be back and off, off the play.
Happy to be back from your honeymoon, is that what you're saying?
No, I wish I still was on the honeymoon.
Tourism centers.
Happy to be out of the air. So, I'm here to discuss the awards for the accommodation tax for this year. We met with the committee on September 8th at 1:30. There were four committee members. Laura Bachinsky, Lloyd Sartan, Stephen Harrington, and Nid Baldwin. You should have a copy of this chart in front of you if you look at it. The yellow columns are last year's awards. The blue is this year's request and the green is the committee's recommendation. And if you look at the bottom, the 1,61,000 is the amount we have to divvy out. And if you look at the bottom two, the Discover Greenwood and Retain by General Fund, these amounts are set by law, so those cannot be changed. And just as a reminder, these are the 2% funds collected by the state and also the Sunday alcohol revenue. So, I'll open. Or were you doing? I'm sorry. Oh, sorry.
Ms. Miller and I attended the party.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
It was.
I knew there was gonna be discussion on this.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, well, I, first of all, I think it's important that we appreciate the members who did attend and, um, better probably than in past. And I think it helps us as council members to see how they arrived at some of these numbers. One thing that I think puzzled both Louis and Stephanie was accommodations. And Stephanie and Louis are more than well, I would like for them to explain that. But, because of Helene last year, we obviously, more money was collected. But, we did not, we got less money. And I'mma, I'mma put it in the Reader's Digest from Dane's version. Yes. Got it. So, basically, it's almost like when you hit a certain threshold, then that amount of money goes to the larger counties, the larger people. Is that, is that a good way of putting it?
So, yeah, so the threshold, whenever you get above 400,000 collected, you know, they take some away and then they give other counties supplements. So, we usually receive a supplement. And I have, from the previous year, we received a little over 65,000 of supplemental funds, which we did not receive this year. And that's why the amount we received was lower.
So, that was number one.
So that was number one. And then, um, the discuss, the other, the other thing I wanted to kind of focus in on too is some of these requ, first of all, there's two new ones on here. And I watched them start with a, a math of let's fund everybody at half of what they ask and kind of start from there. But, um, a little concerned about funding the two new ones right off the bat at that level and then, um, also factoring in what the city gives as well. Um, because some of the ones on here, uh, like ninety-six and where shows the municipalities are not eligible for the same types of funds, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And I'll add to that a question. Uh, as, as Mr. Pruitt said, I was in attendance where we have a longstanding nonprofit in town, the museum, who was not awarded anything. So with the beginning process of let's take what they requested and, you know, put half that on the table, we wound up with some scenarios of, well, I may have gotten five thousand last year and you got five thousand last year, but I asked for twenty thousand this year, so I'm gonna get ten, but you asked for seventy-five hundred. So you got half of what you asked for, but we both got the same amount. So it, it kind of skewed the whole beginning point, in my opinion. Um, and I again want to give kudos to the committee. And I, I have to say this with, with some concerns that, um, a couple of the committee members are also board members of some of the nonprofits being represented. So I have to be very transparent with that. Um, did a good job. I'm not saying there was any, um, coercion at all. There wasn't. It's just the perception when you see that kind of, um, makeup of a, of a commission or a board or committee. I also look at, and I did my own spreadsheet. Um, I, I passed it out to some of the council members, all the council members earlier this evening. And I did more of an analytical approach, which I'm not trying to circumvent the work of the committee, not at all. I'm just saying that when you look at the economic impact, and everybody calculates their economic impact differently, you know, which is my first flag. Um, everybody says that their tourism, their percentage, I put a calculation in there for that as well to say how many of these people that are visiting from outside of the county fifty mile radius. Ooh, a big variable and all that as well. But when I took the data that was given to us and I put in just common metrics, I'm not saying they were the right metrics, but the same consistent metrics for every one of these projects. And then I rated them based on the economic impact they have with the county. So clearly, I think we all agree that the, the folks that are the big, big boys in town are the ones that, are the reason we have the ATAX, uh, a majority of the ATAX. Without those larger projects, without those larger events, we would not have the funding we have today. So I did weight that somewhat and said, based on economic impact, this is the percentage that each one of these projects is contributing to the overall economic, uh, the, the money that we raise. So you can see that in the spreadsheet I gave you, um, there's quite a bit of diff. I'm not saying that's the right approach. I'm just saying it's an analytical approach to how we give money away. Uh, we all have, you know, these, these great, they're all good. I want, they all need to get something. Absolutely. They all contribute to the vitality of Greenwood County. No, no question about that. But I, I want to make sure we're rewarding the right events that are really bringing money into the county as well. So, uh, you can see the numbers, um, and the logic that I've used. And so maybe I think we need to have another look at the recommendation by the ATAX committee.
I would, I think histor- historically, um, I have had some questions about, again, no, not disparaging the committee at all, but I seem to be the one that always brings questions, so I'm glad that two other council members did this time. And I kind of got my hand slapped for doing it a year ago. But to your point, we've got two new ones that got half of what they requested. And then we've got arguably the two biggest festivals in the county who got, uh, a little over eleven thousand less and a little over six thousand less than they got the year before. And not even close to the half that I guess they started with. Again, I wasn't in the room. I'm glad y'all were. But I have some concerns about the numbers. I'd like to see us, and I, and I realize we can change them. Um, but if Ms. Miller is saying we should look at it a little harder, I would, I agree. I concur.
So do I.
Ms. Miller and I had discussion, Louis, earlier in the week, and I think it's a valid, it's a very, um, valid point that because it's accommodations tax, that the entities that bring those funds to the county perhaps should be the greatest rewarded for that. Doesn't mean other people shouldn't receive funds, certainly. But maybe there should be cons- some consideration as to the genesis for those funds, if I can use those words. So, um, perhaps what we need to do, uh, and, and counsel, I'll ask you, what is your pleasure on this? Maybe, maybe what we need to do is, um, just take this now under recommendation and have further discussion before we vote on this.
And, and I would also like to request, Louis, if we could, could we add in any additional funding received? Like from the city?
Um, yeah, I can get that prepared for y'all and update and send it over.
That would be a great addition to the column.
Any other comments or discussion?
No, thank you.
So in the form of a motion, counsel, what's your pleasure?
I would offer you a motion that we take this as information and postpone until we, till our next meeting.
A motion by Mr. Templeton, seconded by the vice chairman. All in favor of that proposal signify? And that is unanimous and so ordered. Thank you.
Thank you, Louis.
Thank you, Louis. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job, Louis.
Go home and get some rest.
Item I, Resolution Twenty Twenty Five Twenty Six, formalizing the position of county council regarding the addition of roads into the county road system. Our public works director, Mr. Rob Rush.
At our last meeting, I subjected council to a very lengthy but exhilarating, uh, presentation on our road and its funding.
The word exhilarating is debatable, by the way.
I'll take that as a compliment.
But no one is debating length. Go ahead.
Uh, it was suggested last week that council, uh, perhaps formalize their, uh, stance on, on the issue. Uh, this week I bring two resolutions to you. They are both numbered as, uh, Twenty Twenty Five dash Twenty Six. One is, uh, a resolution that states council is willing to consider the addition of roads to the county system. And one says council does not intend to add, uh, current or fu- or future roads to the county system. Uh, again, um, just basic resolutions that kind of states the opinion of council formally. If council does want to take that tonight, I would ask that if council does make a motion that they not only include the resolution number, but the statement that clarifies which resolution they are, uh, would be voting on. I can take any questions you might have. Uh, but again, I think this, these resolutions are just basically to give staff direction so that when dealing with developers, um, or, uh, developments that have roads that are privately maintained, that staff can give those people clear direction as to the intention of, uh, county council when it, when it comes to adding roads to the system. I can take any questions you might have.
Mr. Chairman.
Please.
I just want Rob to clarify, make sure I got my numbers right. So in this lengthy and exhilarating, uh, discussion we had last week, so you said our roads are currently on about thirty-five and a, thirty-five point six years in a normal repaving cycle.
That was with increased funding from the state general fund in addition to CTC, nor normal CTC funding. So for the last four years, we've been on a thirty-five year paving cycle, yes.
But you, but in a, your recommendation was that you would love to see us get on a, a twenty to twenty-five year cycle.
Twenty-five, yes, sir.
All right, so currently, just making sure my math's right, currently the, the road fee is twenty-seven eighty per vehicle. Is that right?
Twenty-six dollars per vehicle.
Okay, I'm, I guess why I'm asking you, check my math.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six dollars per vehicle. Um, if we went to a twenty-five year cycle, that was about twenty bucks more.
Twenty additional dollars, yes.
On top of the twenty-six?
Correct.
All right.
For a total of forty-six, roughly.
And then I think you gave us a number, if we took additional roads in, that was another thirty dollars?
Another thirty dollars if we were to take all the private roads into the system. As if we start taking some in, we would probably get requests from the majority, if not all the private roads in the, in the county.
You, you answered my questions. Thank you.
It's a, it's a large number, yes.
So, so for clarity, additional thirty dollars, if you took in all existing private roads now, and then your fear, of course, being that future private roads come, would expect that same consideration?
Correct.
So then the seventy-six dollars would no longer cover our need to stay on a twenty-five year cycle?
As you added roads to the system, you would have to add fee to cover those roads, yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Allison.
I'm really, I missed your speech last meeting, so I'm a little bit, I apologize. I'm behind.
I heard it's a big hit on YouTube if you want to go back and see it, but.
Uh, I did li, I, I did listen to it, but, but anyway, it's not like being there, uh, or being here. But when you give those calculations, the way I see it is we have a new development Bentley Park that you're calculating taking the roads of that neighborhood over and the cost of that. But you're not calculating that all them people living in there are gonna pay taxes. They're all gonna pay property taxes. They're coming from another town. They're gonna have vehicles. They're gonna pay vehicle tax. So to just arbitrarily say that you're gonna add another twenty thou, twenty dollars without taking those things into account, I don't know how, because the, there's gonna be additional revenues coming in from the growth of the roads. Is that, is that correct? If we're adding new roads in, in subdivisions because we have growth, new homes, new property taxes and those kind of things. So i- is that being calculated into that formula at all?
So, yes and no. The, there is a gro, there was a growth factor that I looked at in regard to how we're currently growing our, our revenue now. However, the amount of growth that's occurring out there as far as the length of roads pales in comparison to the number of private roads that are already out there. So it's a, the, the growth rate or the number of, of roads, again, you're already collecting that fee from all those people who live on private roads. And when you take in all those private roads into the system that are already into the system, there's no additional growth expected on top of what we have already. So you're, you're starting, your base factors, we already, we're already collecting the, the fees from a hundred and ten miles worth of roadway that people are already maintaining privately. The amount coming in a year, a few miles a year into the private system, it's a very small percentage in comparison. So yes, there is a growth rate. And typically, right now, the growth rate is only really covering the inflation rate that we are getting with, with the roads. So because it's a fee and not a percentage or, or, you know, it doesn't go up as, you know, as inflation goes up. So our growth rate is really only covering our inflation rate at this time. We've had some really bad inflation the last couple of years, you know, in comparison. So if your inflation rate is five percent and you don't have a five percent growth rate, you're losing on that fee. I mean, the overall general, you know, the, your money goes le, goes, doesn't go as far. So you have to cover the inflation with the growth rate. And yes, there is, we've had decent growth and it has covered the inflation rate through some of the, some, some bad years here. But at the same time, that growth rate, we gotta count on some of that also to say, to get us to a twenty-year paving cycle, because, or twenty-five-year paving cycle. So we're not even there yet. We're not taking care of the roads we already have, even with, you know, a growth rate that's, you know, might be covering inflation. So yes, there is expected to be growth rate of that fee, but it doesn't amount to much once you take out inflation and, um, the amount of roads that are already out there that are, that are private, that we would be subject to taking into the system.
It, can I piggyback real quick and get back to you? So I'm sitting here thinking, and we got Carol in the room, you know, we got some of these subdivisions. Let's say right up there behind Walmart across from Triangle Hardware. So you got subdivisions that are packing in more houses, less roadway, three, four hundred thousand dollar houses and, yeah. So not arguing your inflation factor, but I think the game has changed a little bit. People aren't building houses on one acre lots anymore. We just approved one tonight that's gonna allow almost four per one acre lot. And they're looking at three hundred thousand dollar houses. So these people are coming to us saying, hey, the developers are saying, you're making me follow all of these guidelines to put in these roads. And yet I'm not gonna be able to turn them over to you. Then the residents are going, I'm paying you four thousand dollars a year in taxes. What's that covering? Cause it is covering the people in blank subdivision or blank su, and I'm not arguing with you. I'm telling you the narrative, some of what I'm receiving. Does that piggyback what you're talking about, Mr. Allison?
Yeah, I, I mean, that's kind of my point. Uh, the, I don't know if it's policy, but I've always understood it in Greenwood County, and tell me if I'm wrong. The, the perception was that you're gonna do a development. The county has to come out and approve your development, your roads. They inspect your roads. You have to meet certain standards. You have to, you can't put them in just any way. They check the drainage. If the drainage of the roads is not correct, the county says you gotta do it. The perception is, when you do that, is you're doing that because one day, when this development has reached a certain percentage of buildout, seventy, eighty percent, the county will take these roads over.
Can I?
It's just kind of been the perception, and I think that's what we've always done.
I don't, I, I, I would disagree respectfully, and here's why. Um, the, the engineering and whoever about depth of asphalt and, you know, how you do the roads, that probably dates back to Larry Smith. So that's a, and that was a long time ago. But council at that time, behind, the, the idea behind that was we don't want a developer coming in here and cutting costs and halfway doing roads. And then once they get their build out, they're gone and the residents are sitting there with roads that got holes in them and aren't up to standard. So while there may not have been an official vote, the understood policy was that we require them to build the roads to county standards, if you will. And then, um, if the county council chose to take in said road, we could. But it wa, it was never, it was never, we're gonna take it if you do it this way.
Have we taken any roads in in the last fourteen years?
So my understanding, the last road we took into the system, um, there, there was a question of Backwater Road, which was already being maintained. Uh, I don't know the exact specifics about that, but it was already being maintained. The citizens of Newport put together a special purpose tax district to pave it. But essentially, it was already a county road being maintained as a county road. The last one was the cul-de-sac down on the lake off of Thirty-four, which was better than a decade ago, more than a decade ago, maybe closer to the, that fourteen year, uh, which is a very short cul-de-sac down there. That was the last one that I'm aware of, obviously well before I came to the county. What, what other thing, you, you're, you're, your example of inspecting the roadways, from my point, inspecting the roadways is exactly like you, that you're inspecting a house. You're building it to a building code, all right? In this case, the, we're building the road to a county building code or a county regulation. You, you build a, you have the building code in the house and you inspect it to make sure it meets a minimum standard. You inspect the road to make sure it make, makes a minimum standard. It's to protect the eventual home buyer from substandard work so that you have a basic minimum standard you have to meet, whether it's you're building the house or you're building the road. And, and that's, that's the, the philosophy behind the inspections. Now, in a lot of cases, I will tell you that, you know, if you're looking to attract developments, you're looking for incentives like the city. Now, in a lot of cases, I will tell you that, you know, if you're looking to attract developments, you're looking for incentives like the city had trying to get rooftops, they did have a policy to bring roads into the system, give tax breaks, that sort of thing, to do so, to encourage that development. We saw several developers take advantage of that. When I first came here, the city said stop that, realizing they were taking too much into what they could afford to maintain. But, yeah, the last one, it's been more than a decade, probably closer to fifteen years, the last road we.
I know, I've ne- I've been here fourteen years, I've never voted on whether or not we were going to take a neighborhood or not, as far as roads. I've never voted on one.
I don't think we have.
So, it, it, it hadn't come before us, if the decision was made, it was made at some level other than this. My concern is, i- i- isn't, is not the developer. My concern is this young couple who buys this house in one of these neighborhoods. And ten years down the road, twenty years down the road, the roads are falling apart, and he had no idea when he bought into this neighborhood that he was responsible out of his own pocket to maintain these roads. If we're going to do this, we need to let the public know somehow or another, these developers need to be mandated to let these buyers know that your HOA needs to start putting money back and charging you a certain much to maintain these roads. Because I see a disaster down the line to where you're going to have these neighborhoods, and the road system is going to be collapsing on them, and they're going to be coming to us, okay? Even though it's their roads, it always happens that way. They come into us, okay? Find that their roads are unpassable in these neighborhoods. We pay taxes, we pay car taxes, we pay road taxes. So, I am not comfortable with either one of these right now. I'm not one recommending just keep kicking every can down the road. But I think there needs to be a lot of conversations, and, and there needs to be a policy, there needs to be notifications to developers, there need to be notifications to potential home buyers in these neighborhoods that are going to be responsible for millions of dollars worth of road maintenance. The reason we're talking about this tonight is the astronomical cost of roads. Somebody's going to pay for it. Somebody's got to pay for it. Either we're going to pass it on through our tax system, or it's going to be pushed over onto the individual property owners. I just want to make sure the people coming to Greenwood, buying these homes, these couples, understand that. As long as they understand, when you buy a property in a gated community, that is a private road, and the county don't maintain those roads, and you understand that, and you buy into that, and you pay for that. But I don't think the people who are buying into these subdivisions, I don't not think, I know they don't know that they're responsible for those roads. And if we're, and I, I just want to make sure that they know information. I think it's our obligation to let them know if the county has no intentions of ever taking these roads over, is, is my, one, my opinion.
Mr. Chairman, I want to, um, agree with Mr. Allison on several things. I have a lot of questions around this whole thing. What is the current process? What have we told people? We don't have a policy, apparently, from what I'm gathering, and this resolution, either I couldn't see it or didn't, or is this the first time we're seeing this resolution?
This did not make the packet on Thursday.
Okay, okay. So, I just, I think there's a lot of questions, a lot of discussion that needs to happen uh, before we actually could take this into consideration and, and vote on anything.
Direction from here.
Mr. Chairman, I would, um, I would like to see us get to the twenty-five-year repaving plan on our current roads at some point, but I don't even, I mean, I wouldn't even feel comfortable throwing that on the public right out of the sheet, because you're talking an extra twenty dollars on top of the current twenty-six per vehicle. So, I wouldn't, I would really like to see us get to that twenty-five, twenty-five-year plan, but I think that would have to be, personally, I think it would have to be phased in over time. And, um, then I think we'd have to have some type of metrics to show what we're doing with the additional money, and how many miles of roads are getting paved, and, and those types of things. I will tell you that in resp- out of respect for, for Councilwoman from District Four and Mr. Allison from District Two, I'm ready to vote on this tonight, and I can tell you that I don't think anything's going to change, on my opinion, but we can't afford the roads we got now, I certainly don't want to take any more new ones.
Well, I, I think, a- and for me, for staff, who are asked these questions all the time about bringing a road into the system, we tell them, a road hasn't been brought in the system in ten years. But we do not discourage them from bringing roads forward. And if council passed a resolution that says your intention is not bring roads into the system, we could then tell these developers upfront, it's council's intentions that these roads do not come to the system, you need to prepare, you know, HOAs financially to be sure that you're allowing for that either, you know, through the development, through the setup of the HOA. Right now, you know, we don't make decisions for council. So when someone says, I want, I want my road coming to, can, into the system, we tell them, well, that's a decision for council to make. We, we tell them, you know, what the county standards are, w- we tell them that a road hasn't been brought in the system for more than a decade, but we don't discourage them from coming to council to bring those requests to you. Uh, I think we have one currently pending for a new subdivision that, you know, as, will be brought before council at some point. So, um, you know, we're having this discussion tonight, but there are, you know, with no action tonight, I don't know how that's going to affect others bringing it forward. But I, I've got another road that is a private road, dirt road, mile-long, three rental properties at the end of it, that they are next in line to come to council to request their road be brought into the county system. Again, no additional revenue.
I think I'm, I'm just where I'm confused. I'm hearing that we haven't approved anything in the last fifteen years, but I know we've had neighborhoods and developments spring up. So you're saying, but then you're saying that it would be able to come to council, but council's saying they haven't approved or not approved anything. So I'm really confused. So, the people that have developed all these neighborhoods in the last ten, fifteen years, have they come to somebody and said, will you take our roads? Has somebody made that decision? Or has council, I'm hearing council has not.
Never.
I'm totally confused about what has transpired over the last ten to fifteen years.
I think we've, we've essentially put the facts in front of them, and they've chosen not to come to council.
Usually the HOA ends up, ends up, they figure it into their HOA.
And it, it ends up in the HOA. Now, whether they're properly funding the HOA to, to handle the roads, I would question that, because we've, we've seen subdivisions out there that are ten, fifteen-plus years old, and don't have the funds on hand to pave their roads or maintain their roads, and they come to us about it. But, you know, we, we've been to several subdivisions, one just last week, where we went, walked the roads with them, the private roads, told them, you know, gave them some opinions on, on what they need to be doing to their roads to maintain them going forward, and that HOA is preparing those, you know, those funds to do so. So, um, that's a particular subdivision that didn't get built out. And so they're not, they're not collecting the funds from all the homeowners, because there's, it's, it's less than fifty percent full. And so maybe if they had completely built out, they'd be collecting enough through HOA fees to maintain the roads, but they don't currently. So, um, we consult on those things all the time, um, you know, and, and try to help these individual, you know, get some of their, how to maintain them.
Haven't we lost state money along the lines here? We talked about that part.
Right, so, so the CTC fu- the CTC has a normal allotment, an every-year allotment from the state gas tax. You could pretty much count on that, currently it's about one-point-seven million dollars total. In addition to that, last four years, the General Assembly was putting some general fund money with that, substantial money, doubling and tripling that amount. That's how we got the paving cycle down to the, the thirty-five years, as opposed to the eighty years when I first calculated it five years ago. So, because that had extra state money. Now that extra state money, there's no extra state money this year. So when they allocate in, in May, we will get a substantially less, probably eight-hundred-thousand dollars of what we, you know, typically get. So, um, I'm just preparing council that, without the extra money, we cannot pave enough roads to keep up with our current system. And a twenty-dollar increase would cover, we believe would cover a twenty-five-year cycle, so.
Mr. Chairman, I have, I have one other question. There's forty-six counties in the state of South Carolina. Has anybody seen what the other counties are doing? Do you know how many counties are not taking roads of new developments?
I, I talked about this question a little bit last week, or la- last meeting, but I have a couple of, we have a couple of group emails that go around with public work directors, road departments. That question comes up often, the general consensus is, is the vast majority of counties are not taking roads into their system. Just, they're not. They can't afford what they currently have. With inflation and asphalt prices going up like they were, they all see themselves in a kind of similar funding situation. I, I don't re- recall one that's anecdotal, as I'm not surveying every county, but just anecdotally, for what I'm, I'm hearing from my peers across the state, no one's taken roads into the system, and if they were, they're gra- they're, they're doing policies on, um, you know, to, to discourage that, or, or discontinue those, those programs, just much like the city who had a program to take them in, and now they've discontinued that program.
Rob, I guess is just one council member. You know, my concern is, on a thirty-five-year cycle, yeah, I don't think that's adequate to maintain the roads in a safe, reliable condition for the roads that we have to maintain now. So to some degree, I think I'm, I'm with Mr. Templeton on this. But I also, I also understand, um, you know, when Mr. Allison makes a point about these people not knowing, so what I, but I believe there's an opportunity here for us to satisfy both sides of the, of this concern. Because I think your statement about developers, and I think Mr. Allison would agree with this, the develop- if, if the county is not going to be responsible for private roads, and candidly, I don't think we should be. But if we're not going to be, there needs to be a clear communication on that. My concern, though, is if we don't increase our, if we don't increase our fee and go to the twenty-five-year old, year plan, I believe there's going to be continued degradation of the roads that we are trying to keep up now. You don't disagree with that, I don't think.
Correct.
Yeah. So, so, you know, council, um.
Well, he can't give clear, he can't give clear, um, he can't give clear direction to the developers unless we make a decision.
Exactly.
And, and I do agree that we need to try to get to the twenty-five-year paving plan. But again, if we did that all at one time, your road fee would go from twenty-six to forty-six and on, per vehicle. And, you know, we got, obviously, we have people that live on private roads, we also have people who live on state roads and think they pay too much taxes already, and then we, um, and you can call it a fee, but as Mr. Allison likes to say, a fee is still a tax, just by a nicer name. So, that being said, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to go out on a limb, and I'm going to offer you a motion that we approved the resolution saying that we do not intend to take in any new roads.
We have a motion, a second. I'm going to add a comment and a discussion before we vote. There's a flip side of this also. I was in a meeting in Charlotte today and had a lengthy text message from Brooks Diesel over in Hodges area. He talks to us about that road every year. He has legitimate concerns about our ability to maintain that road, and that's a dirt road. That's a gravel road.
That is correct.
So, you know, what's at front of mind for me is, I, while I agree that we need to increase this road fee to get us to a reasonable duration of time, like your twenty-five years, I would also believe that Mr. Brooks would say, I don't want my fee going up, and the basis of that being that we're taking in private roads in privately developed neighborhoods.
I, I would, yes, I would agree.
So, and that would be, I believe, the vast majority of county taxpayers would be in that circumstance. So I, I guess what I'm saying, if we were to say that we're going to take on private roads, I believe that to some degree, we're subsidizing those developments. You said earlier that, that there was a period in time when Greenwood County needed to spawn growth, and we probably did some things with roads at that time that we wouldn't necessarily feel the need to do today. But, but council, I, I believe we can address both sides of this. Mr. Templeton, you can, you can speak further about what you care for your motion to be.
Well, my motion right now is just that, I think we need to have a discussion on how we get to the twenty-five year. And I don't think, I don't think we should do it all at once, that's my opinion. But for tonight's purposes, so that we can give direction, which seems to be an issue, and clear direction. My motion is simply that, um, to support the resolution, that council does not intend to add any private roads. And, um, and I would ask that, and I'll, we'll, we'll tackle the, we'll tackle the twenty-five-year plan at a, at another time.
Mr. Chair, can I say something?
Yes, sir.
I see it a little different than the way you see it. The way I see it is what you're telling all these new subdivisions, and their numbers of them, and there are thousands of houses. We're not going to take your roads, but we're going to raise your road taxes, twenty more dollars per car.
And you're exactly right.
That's what you're telling them, that's what you're doing.
And my comment would be that every time you pull out of your neighborhood, you're driving on the county roads that we're trying to maintain now, that we can't keep up with it.
Again, I think it's, I mean, I, I, you're right, Mr. Allison, but it's a separate, like I said, I'm trying to keep, I'm trying to keep the two issues separate. Um, and that's why my motion was, we, the council does not intend to add any future, any private roads, because again, we, at this point, we can't keep up with the one, we can't pay for the ones we got, with what, with the funding that we currently have.
And I would say that.
My motion, I'm just waiting to see if we get a.
The additional fees, there's a.
Got a second, nevermind.
You got a fu- you got the?
I got a second.
So, I, I will say that the, the budget, the raising the fee, I have not proposed that yet. I, I presented the information, we, we still, come May, when, when CTC does the funding, there'll be another state budget on the verge of being approved. We'll see if the state adds additional money, you know, does that put off, you know, I, I think there's, there's more talk ahead about the budget piece and the fee piece. Tonight is really about what the intention of council is, and so that they can give staff clear direction, so we can give that clear direction to the developers as, as they bring these projects to us.
I wouldn't want to discuss the fee piece until budget time, anyway.
Yeah.
So, we have a, we have a motion, and I hear that we, I didn't hear our second. Do we have a second? Mr. Griffin, so we have a motion by Mr. Templeton, second. All in favor of receiving Rob's information and approving as presented.
No, actually, what we're approving, what we're, what we're, what we're actually voting on is that council does not intend to add private roads.
Correct.
Making sure we're clear, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, we're not ta- we're not taking up the fee increase in this motion.
No.
Only that, that council, it, council's position currently is that we are taking in no new roads.
Which I would like to say has been kind of the unofficial, but this would be, this is, it's kind of been the unofficial for a long time, but never been written down, so this would clear that up.
So all in favor of that position? All opposed? And that fails on a four-three vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item J, ordinance twenty-two-five-twenty-four.
Mr. Chairman, are we going to have a, uh, nevermind, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. Templeton.
Mr. Chairman, before we, before we leave this topic, I think what was being sought was some guidance, and I don't think we got any guidance there. You didn't, you didn't approve one, but you didn't approve the other either. So, are you planning on taking the other one up, or where's the guidance, I guess is what I'm asking?
Well, the, the, the other resolution says council is willing to consider the addition of current roads. It doesn't say we will take them, it says willing to consider, which puts, which means that every time somebody comes in, then each individual private community is going to have to come to county council to get their road, to get their road approved. And then it comes down to us to say, well, we like this one, but we don't like that one.
But, but that's what we've told people in the past, they had the ability to come to council, but it's been deterred because we've said, but they've never done it in the past, but they never had the option to come before.
The, the second, the second resolution says that we will do a formal policy with a procedure for them to bring it to council. I, I truly believe, once, i- if someone comes to me, and I say, here's the form, fill it out, council will vote on this, you fill it out, you get it on the agenda. You will see a huge influx of requests.
And my only concern, if, if I may, is that the people who are already in the pipeline, the developers that are already in the pipeline, they've already put a maintenance bond on, they've done what you've asked them to do, is their perception that they have this opportunity to come before council. So I'd hate to say that we're saying no, because there's so many neighborhoods, and we're approving them every single in time we meet, there's more and more neighborhoods being approved. So I don't know what their understanding was going forward with developing these roads, these neighborhoods. That's my concern. I don't want to have given them the false impression that this is what they can do, and now we're going to say, oh, no, you can't, we changed our minds. So I'm more concerned about those in the pipeline. If we can come to that conclusion about where we draw the line, and nobody that's been approved going forward. But I, I think we, I'm again, I, I just have a lot of questions about the whole thing.
I may be misunderstanding you, Kathy, I, I don't think, I, I think what, I don't think that Rob and his people have been leading these people to believe we're taking in their roads.
No, he's told them, they haven't done it, and, you know, they, they haven't, but it hasn't come to council to approve it.
Right, but the performance bond piece hadn't changed, because that was put in as a protection, and the way the roads had to be built for the people who are buying in those residential neighborhoods.
And that's, that's my question. I don't understand the process of what has occurred enough to what we're suggesting should occur, for me to feel comfortable with saying we're not. So we've already voted on the first one, yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I, I think that's, Ms., Ms. Miller and myself originally said, I don't know, I can't tell you that at some point I, that I would vote that we don't take roads, or that we may consider at times. All I said tonight was that at this point, I don't have enough information, as Ms. Miller said, to make that decision. It's not that I'm saying we should take all of these roads. Number one, how many roads are we talking about? How many developers are we talking about? What is the projected cost? What is the projected growth? I think there's a lot of things that affect this decision. I think it can affect whether more developers are going to come to our community. Now, right now, today, we may not care, we may think we have plenty of, uh, of, of, of developers here, and I won't anymore, but the day will come. And, you know, uh, but the main thing that I, again, I'm, it's not the developer, it's the property owner, that I just want to make sure they're considered, they're buying these homes, these young couples, and that's who they are, are buying these homes, and they do not know that they are, the fact of the matter is, they are responsible to maintain their own roads in their community. And that's not the case in Hunter's Creek subdivision, that's not the case in Forest Hills, that's not the case in a lot of these neighborhoods. My question is, if we, if, if we as a council, let me ask this, if we as a council could say, we're not going to maintain the roads in the new subdivision, can we say we're not going to maintain the roads that we've been maintaining in the old neighborhoods? Can we do that?
I would leave that as a legal opinion for our attorney.
I'm obviously not prepared to get to that.
I'm sorry? That's one of the questions. That's why I'm saying tonight that I need more information.
I think Forest Hills are actually state roads.
I, I think-
I think Forest Hills are actually state roads.
But, but anyway, my point is, your neighborhood was-
They all need state roads.
It's a state road. So, anyway, that's my, that's my point, I'm not asking the attorney, I didn't mean to to question you on that tonight. That's the kind of information that we need to know. If there's a road that's twenty miles long, that's costing us two million dollars a year that serves three people, then maybe we need to look at that road versus the one that services eight hundred people. I, I ju- my, my point of it is, I just don't, I didn't have enough information. I'm not saying tonight that I wouldn't vote for either one of these, but I think I don't have enough information as to how we got to where we are. Uh, I heard that it come before council, but I've been here a while now, I'm like Gonzo Brian, I've been here a while now. I've been here almost fourteen years. I don't think I've ever voted on, other than, uh, Backwater Road that was the of, um, a private road that you know about all that. But we did, we took that road. Since I've been on here, we chose to take that road.
But, but technically, we were already maintaining it, and for all intents and purposes, it was on the books as a county road, as I understand it.
But anyway, that's my position. I'm not, I don't want anybody to think that I'm, I'm for taking on all these new roads. I just didn't have enough information tonight for me to make that decision. Most of these neighborhoods are already in, so I don't think, they, they're not backing up now. So the decision we make on this ain't going to decide what these neighborhoods are doing, because they're too deep in now. They're going forward whether we say we're going to take them, or we're not going to take them. They're not going to, I mean, the decision's been made to develop, that the infrastructure's in, and, and all of these pretty much. So I don't think they're sitting around wringing their hands. I'm sure they're hoping we are, but I don't know, I don't know how it affects them financially at this point.
I, I think one of the purposes of, of the presentation I made last week is to show council where we were financially on our road system.
Absolutely.
And that, and that we're way behind. And in my mind, I can't come before you and recommend any additional roads be taken into the system until we sort out funding of the roads we currently have, in a long-term plan. Because we, we consistently, a- and, you know, we look only so far into the future. And when I went out to Public Works, we, you know, Toby and I spent a lot of time on developing a five-year plan, a ten-year plan, we need to be looking down the road. We didn't just fund the landfill with cash, because we were looking to, one, two years into the future. We funded the landfill in cash because we started saving for it a decade ago. And we need to be looking at that same thing with our roads. So, a- again, tonight was about if, if council wanted to give formal direction. We're, we're looking for direction so we can pass that direction on to those developers that come in. Or the individuals, like the one I just spoke with last week, lives on a mile-long dirt road with three residents at the end. And, oh, well, I'm sorry, it's three rental properties at the end.
And we maintained that road.
No, it's a private road they want to bring into the system.
Oh, they want to bring it in.
Correct. We, we've, we've done some maintenance in the past, thinking some of our employees thought it was a county road, but it's, it's not.
But under our present policy, we can say no.
Council can say whatever they want. There is no, there is no formal policy.
Okay.
That's what we're trying, that's what we're trying to get to.
We're looking for a formal pro- there is no formal policy, there's nothing written in our-
We've done it for forty-five years like that, you know, so, I mean, we say no.
Correct.
You know, I, I would still like at budget time to talk about how we get to the twenty-five year plan. I don't know that we can do it all at once at twenty dollars a car, assuming your math is right. Now, me personally, that's a hundred and thirty-eight dollars a year, to me, that's eleven dollars a month. I think it's worth it. But I can promise you that some of my constituents don't agree with me on that. So, so, uh, but, you know, I think that needs to be happened at budget time, but I, I we're gonna, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to make a decision at some point, so you guys can give correct direction.
So, so I believe to answer the manager's question, Rob, and you don't need a crystal ball, you've heard all these comments, you know what, what data the council, I think, would be looking for in this regard.
Well, I, I don't.
Well, that, that's a, that, wha- what you've asked for, it's very broad, and it's very time-consuming, and it's, it's, some of it might be beyond our capabilities to accumulate some of that data. So, you know, are, are we willing to spend money for a consultant to do some sort of, of, of evaluation of our system and that thing, or, because I would tell you that, you know, e- each time we do a presentation, you know, the, the background, the data gathering, all that, it, it takes time, it's not easily gathered. I try to put that together. We can do that, it might cost some money, but, um,
I as one, it's a multi-million dollar question. That's our point, right? So why not? Why not find out, really? Maybe, maybe that's what we need to do. You see how many roads we have, how many, what's it going to cost, what's it going, what's the, I, I'm, I'm not opposed to that. I mean, this is a, this is an expen- it is, it is a, one of the top financial aspects of county government is public roads, is our road system. So I, I mean, I'm one saying, you know, maybe that's where we need to go with this.
But in my mind, we're so far away from considering additional roads that I, I'm extremely budget conscious, and I do not want to waste money on a, on a report or digging out data that in the end, I know financially kind of what the answer is for myself. Now, obviously, council doesn't, they don't, they're not in public, y'all, y'all not in Public Works, the road department every week. You know, I, I see it, I, I, I know where I stand on the issue. A- again, I think we're so far away from considering additions that I don't necessarily want to waste valuable resources to, to try to answer that question. But again, it, I will do whatever council wishes in that. And if we want to evaluate that further, by all means, w- we can do that. But direction is kind of what we're looking for.
And, and what do, in your opinion, because you know, what will it take for us to get to the place where we can start to take in new roads? Considering new roads?
The first question I asked me, and how are we going to get on a paving cycle for our current roads? So, you know, if, if the state decides tomorrow that they're going to fund us an additional two to three million every year for the next twenty-five years, we can get on that with state money. If they decide not to, you know, we'll see what the state does with their budget this year, but that's a, a, an issue every year with them. Or we decide we're going to go on our own, and it's, we increase it by five dollars a year, and we take that five dollars a year in the road fee and put it directly into a paving fund, as opposed to general expenses. You know, that's probably the better, what I would probably consider the better route to do, and increase that to the point that we get to where self-sufficient with our funding. And then, as we bring in more roads, adjust the fee accordingly when we look at growth, inflation, and what the fee is bringing in. So that if we get to a point that says, all right, this is a half-mile road, has X amount of houses, we expect X amount of revenue, this is how the fee will have to be adjusted to accept that into the system.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to say one more thing, and then I'm done. Last thing, I, my question is, this, this is where I'm at with it, this is me personally. The road systems that we are, would be requested to take are, are, other than some, like you're talking about a a gravel road that leads in, most of them are subdivisions. Most of them are going to be these new subdivisions. Is that correct?
No.
Okay, what other roads are we ask, are being?
All the other private subdivisions.
I'm talking about all private-
Not new ones.
Okay.
All the currents.
That, that are not gated.
No, no, no.
Gated, if it's gated.
The gate, the gate's not the issue. I mean, think of all, think of Hillendale, and all the ones that y'all deal with the special tax districts. All the ones that exist today that are private. We guarantee will be before you very soon to say, county council, please take over my road.
Okay.
That's what he's talking about.
And special tax district would be a perfect way for him to take care of the roads, too.
There's a lot of them we are.
Sure.
Bunch of, of neighborhoods that we are.
Just depends when they came, when they were built.
Right. So the question is, to offset that cost, can we not maintain them anymore? That's my question to the attorney, is the ones that we're all, that, the neighborhoods, we, we, are we lifelong committed to that now? Is there a policy that says the fact that they done it ten years ago, we going to continue?
Please, just to make sure I understand your question. You're asking, could we forego maintaining subdivision A to take on subdivision B?
No, not maintaining any of.
So you would take on-
Yeah.
I, I thought I understood you said-
No, I'm not saying drop this one and take, I'm saying level the land, the, 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 the field for everybody, to where all taxpayers are-
So we wouldn't take on any private roads at all, anywhere?
Well, I, I, that's my point, is do we, do we, I don't know.
I'm trying to understand what your question is.
The question is, can, can we do that? Could this, could this council, if they choose to do it, do that?
To do what? That's why, I, I've said it back to you-
It's not take them on, to, to, to drop those subdivisions.
So, I- To say to Cherokee Hills, we've maintained your roads, but we're going to stop maintaining your roads.
Can I ask, let me ask the question again, because I want to make sure I understand. You're asking, could we stop maintaining all private roads?
And take no more.
That's what you're asking?
That's right.
Okay, we can get you an answer, though. I just want to be very clear with your question.
That's the question. I'm not saying drop somebody and take somebody on, I'm saying do, if, if you're going to, you know, and I'm not saying that's what we need to do, that's just a question.
Do we know how many private roads are, no, no, I'm saying, do we know how many private roads are being paid for through special tax districts? Is that a Stephanie question? And I don't expect you to answer that right now, I'm saying, is, do we know? I mean, because that would be the perfect use, obviously, of a special tax district. Just, just lighting and stuff.
No, that's fine, it was just a question.
Mr. President, I want to clarify, and hopefully put this to bed, on the other resolution, because, and again, I got this tonight, and so I've, I read the second one. And it's, I'll read it out of order, but it's the same thing. Greenwood County Council directs county manager and county staff to develop a written policy slash procedure for current or future developments to bring their requests before council for additions to the county maintained road system. The Greenwood County Council will consider these requests according to the policy procedure and provide an opportunity for the requesting of the county staff to present their information, and county council is willing to consider the addition of current or future roads. That's what this is saying, that we will develop a policy procedure that then we would follow. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that, um, we approve resolution twenty-two-five, given the council the ability to consider the addition with the policy procedures being written.
Heard the motion from Ms. Miller, is there a second?
Hold on one second, Mr. Chairman, didn't Robbie's?
Did he did the other one?
No, his was the other one.
Well, I know, but then not to bring them in, but she wants to- So that one was voted down?
We voted it down.
Okay, okay.
This is the policy that says in red, council is willing to consider the addition.
I'm good with that one.
And write a policy, policy.
Yeah, correct, that is the one that says we will write a policy.
I'm just want to make sure.
We have a motion by Ms. Miller.
That motion.
And we have a second by Mr. Allison, all in favor of Ms. Miller's motion. Looks five, five? Five in favor, those opposed? And two opposed, and that carries five, too. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Item J, long-awaited item J. Ordinance twenty-two-five-twenty-four, considering the proposed amendment to the Greenwood County zoning ordinance to reflect changes regarding the use of temporary off-site and temporary on-site development signs. Ms. Coleman.
And I will say that the growth we've been discussing is the nexus for this language. Carson Penny, Kevin Ely, our code enforcement officer, Tracy Goldman-Busby, my planner, and myself have been meeting regularly to discuss the language in the zoning ordinance for signs. So what's come out of that at this point, and we probably will have different levels of this, is that we wanted to define what real estate and development signs are. So we've, we've amended the definition section to put some of these things into, into real language that we can define and give out to developers, and they, they can understand. Temporary on-premise subdivision and development signs, and temporary off-premise subdivision and development signs, primarily because you've probably noticed when you drive around town that you'll see a sign for a development that is nowhere near where you are located at the time. Um, so we wrote the definitions for those, and we also went into section, um, six dash three dash one-one-fifteen, which is one fifteen, which is, um, signs, uh, to define what the parameters are for having those signs in those locations, either onsite or offsite. And then finally, because we changed some of the language in the sign ordinance, we had to change uh, complimentary language that's in all of the residential districts, because each one of the residential districts actually has a section regarding signage. So, we've done a few things here, we've defined what the real estate signs are, the development signs. We've defined what they are onsite and what they are offsite, and then we've created the sections in the sign ordinance that addresses how and under what parameters you can have those signs. Uh, we're trying to create a more realistic and reasonable uh, system by which we allow signs to go up in these new developments. We're not talking about specific subdivision signs, we're talking about the advertising for those subdivisions.
Right, and I think I showed our attorney one on four-by-four posts, and I was perusing Green, Greenville County today, and that same company didn't have them on those types of posts, so they feel very comfortable in just dropping those things in our county, and I don't agree with that.
Stood in concrete.
Yes. So obviously, so obviously, our effort is to stop that, and I believe, Carol, if I remember, that we talked also about the- And I believe, Carol, if I remember, that we talked also about the radius of the distance.
Right.
The sign, developers could place signs. So, council, this is first reading and title only, so it doesn't require any action. Any further discussion?
There will be a public hearing on this one.
It is scheduled for October seventh?
Yeah, meeting, next meeting.
Second.
That's the seventh.
Seven.
October seventh.
Next meeting.
And Planning Commission will hear this on September twenty-third.
Next week.
September twenty-third goes to the council. Thank you.
Any further discussion, questions, council?
No.
Moving then to item K, ordinance twenty-twenty-five twenty-five, authorizing pursuant to Title Four of the Code of Laws of South Carolina nineteen-seventy-six, is amended, including sections four-one-one-seventy, four-one-one-seventy-five, and four-twenty-nine-sixty-eight thereof. And Article Eight, uh, Section thirteen of South Carolina Constitution, the execution and delivery of an infrastructure credit agreement by and between Greenwood County, South Carolina, and one or more companies known to the county collectively as Project Star, to provide for certain annual special source revenue and/or infrastructure credits to enlarge the boundaries of a joint, uh, county industrial and business park and other related matters. Mr. Bateman, you have information for us on that, Mr. Bateman?
First reading?
First reading and title only. You don't have anything you need to say about that?
Moving along.
Okay, thank you very much. That concludes, that concludes all new business. We'll move, uh, we have no pending items, uh, for the action of council, I don't believe. So we'll move to district reports. Ms. Griffin, District One.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to say good evening to each and every one of you. Glad that you were able to make it. Um, just wanna say thank you to, um, each and everyone, if anyone made it to, um, District One and Promised Land Community this weekend. Um, we had a great time. I was not there on time, but I made it through. And, um, it was just good to see, um, individuals that we hadn't seen a while that was there to see the parade and just take part in the fellowship, the fun and the food. Um, and just, um, wanted to say thank you, um, also to, um, to council for, um, how diligently we are working to make things, um, good for each and everyone in this Greenwood district and area. And that so ends my report. Um, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. Mr. Allison, District Two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize to my colleagues for not being here last, at our last meeting. I was unable to be here. However, Ms. Bishop was the only one that called me to check and see if I was okay.
That's not true.
You may have called me.
You and I talked earlier that day, so. He's so wrong.
All is well in District Two tonight, Mr. Chairman. That is my report.
Ms. Allison, Ms. Bishop, District Three.
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, um, I just wanted to mention that I did, well, thank everybody for coming. And I know it was a long meeting, but I think we moving, we are moving forward, so that's a good thing. Um, I did meet with one of my community's Rain Tree. And we met last Saturday, September the sixth, and we had a productive meeting. Um, and then I just wanted to say that Carolina Health Centers, they, we, we do partner with them a lot. Um, just like Stephanie mentioned on, with the opioid, um, um, campaign that we have. Um, but they lost their CEO, and I meant to mention that last, um, I meant to mention that last meeting, Sue Veer. Sue was a very dear friend to me and, um, I did serve on that board with her, you know, under her. And she was just phenomenal. It was so wonderful to know Sue. And, uh, we, our community is, we lost a, a giant in, in Sue. Because Sue actually went to Washington and advocated for Carol, for, for all, all health centers. And she was just a wealth of knowledge. She was just such a beautiful person. Um, and so she will be truly missed. And I just thank God that I know her, I, I know of her and I knew her and that she knew me. Um, but please keep her family and the Carolina Health Centers in your, in your prayers. Because we, they've had a lot of different changes happen and it just wasn't expected for her to be gone. But that's the thing with all of us, we never know when our time is. And so I just encourage each and every one to make sure that you enjoy your family and enjoy your life. Because you don't know when your day comes. And, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That ends my report.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. We certainly are not promised tomorrow. Ms. Miller, District Four.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, as you mentioned earlier, um, I did attend the Vision Greenwood Resiliency Committee meeting earlier this month. Uh, had probably about, I would say, forty to fifty community leaders in attendance as well as delegation. Uh, so it was, I, I thought, a very informative, it was just the second meeting, so certainly it's very early in, uh, in the stage of, uh, moving forward. But it, it's a good group of people to talk about, uh, recovery and resiliency in the face of, um, disasters. Um, I want to recognize, I think we have some members from the Mayor's Youth Council. Would you stand, please? I think there's three. Said, thank you all for coming and we appreciate you being here tonight. Yeah, this is a great group. Thank you. And, uh, also I want to, uh, wish the treasurer and her staff a lot of luck with all that coming up. Thank you. So this is my report.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Vice Chairman, District Five.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I, too, would like to applaud the young people for being here. And, uh, look at Trentsey and say, what were you thinking? Uh, and, uh, our emergency prayer and this director, I'm sure you're thinking, you picked the wrong night to show up as well. You wasn't prepared for this, were you? If you don't know, I'm the class clown, by the way.
We know.
So, I attended the, uh, ninety-six Town Council meeting last night. And, um, also attended the ATAX meeting, as mentioned before, Ms. Miller and I. It's always good to listen to see how our members come to these conclusions. Um, on my way back from Greenville today, in addition to seeing, um, subdivision signs, I also rode down Conestee Road and got my first live glimpse of the newly completed Conestee Dam. That was a treat. Uh, if you haven't seen it, I would encourage you to do so. Um, in light of all that's gone on over the last weeks and even month or so, um, before I hit my Bible verse, I wanna have two quotes from Dr. Martin Luther King Junior. Number one is, darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. Number two is, I have decided to stick with love. Hate is too great a burden to bear. So my Bible verse tonight is First John three eighteen. Dear children, let us not love with words or speech, but with actions and in truth. That ends my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Templeton, District Six.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just wanna say that I always appreciate, uh, the discussion that we can have with council and respectful discussion, because as we know, around the state, our, our counterparts don't always do it that way. So I appreciate that a lot. I appreciate each and every one of you. Um, and in District Six today, I had a, I got an email from a concerned citizen because there was a severely damaged manhole cover that was, that was presenting a danger to folks on the sidewalk. And I wasn't exactly sure where to send that, so I sent it to Mr. Chapel and within an hour, it was taken care of. So, and that SED, SEDOT got out and got it fixed. So, I appreciate that, Mr. Chapel. And, um, and that, that ends my, all is well in District Six, as far as I know. That ends my report.
Thank you, Mr. Templeton. I'm gonna be very brief. Uh, Trentsey, uh, our, our chamber CEO was present at the Lakeland's career showcase at Piedmont Tech. Earlier this week, I was out of town, not able to be there, but Trentsey, I understand we had a really good turnout. Uh, a lot of companies there trying to put some career interest path before our eighth graders. I think the focus was on eighth graders. Um, all's well in District Seven. Uh, Ms. Sheila, you know, is, is, is now has become my habit. Ms. Sheila's message to me this morning was, and I don't know that I have this problem, by the way. The highest level of respect is from someone who defends your name behind your back. I guess I should hope to have that issue. Um, Mr. Manager, any report? Nothing else? Madam Attorney, how about you, Ms. McIntyre?
All right.
So if there's nothing else, or council, council will stand adjourned. Thank you very much.